Let the minutes reflect that all Alderman are present and the mayor along with several department heads. I think you have Ms. Carolyn on here. We need to make sure she's not recorded in the minutes.
I think you got the wrong copy.
Mr. Steven Gloroso, lead us in the evocation. Ms. Karen Stennis in the pledge, please.
Father, since I am here, pray for this place. Please be with everybody that is battling things through our Christmas holidays and please be with them. Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us a way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us remember your love and grace and be faithful in our service to you. Give us the patience and understanding to face life's challenges with grace. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we had on the agenda for the public hearing. It has been deferred to the regular meeting on January the 6th, so that will not happen tonight. We'll move on to Agenda Public Comment.
I'm sorry, we jumped over that, didn't we?
A motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion by Alderman Blackman, second by Alderman Hinton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're gonna skip the public hearing and then we'll move on to Agenda Public Comment. Public is invited to address the board for about five minutes each for a maximum period of 30 minutes, only regarding the issues on this agenda. Please identify yourself and the agenda item. Do we have anybody that'd like to address the board? Okay, we'll move right on. We have all business. We have a proposed agreement with Ocean Springs Chamber Main Street. I don't know, Ms. Cynthia, would you give us your take on the proposed agreement if you don't mind, please?
Please, if you would, just.
Hey there, Cynthia Sutton here with the Ocean Springs Chamber Main Street. I'm the CEO of the Ocean Springs Chamber and each year we do ask the city for some annual funding from the 2% food beverage tax and the 2% lodging tax. We do a request every summer, July or August, and we provide to each Board of Aldermen a detail of some of the samples and what we do. On the agenda is a proposed contract agreement, if you will, related to that. We heard this issue coming up a couple of months ago that was floating around as an idea without anyone chatting with us directly. And so we drafted something ourselves and sent that over. On the agenda tonight is a portion of that version. There is additions to it that our attorney, our chamber, city attorney, were not aware of or even know of, but I do not feel an agreement is necessary because we are always your request. What we do are we are tourism arm and marketing arm of the city. You know, we have brought in increased festivals in the, over the last 30 or 40 years. That's what our job is. We're a festival town, but we're the ones who initially created most of those, execute most of those, handle most of those. And I think what we do shows in what we do, like related to say the food beverage tax or the lodging tax, which were, which were both created to do several things, including tourism and promote the town. And just since 2013, a lot of change happened in 2011, 2013 with things that broke the festivals and things like that. So say example, the lodging tax used to be 30,000. It's now 90,000 and that change started growing during that time, which was also at the same time we doubled the size of the Peter Anderson Festival, added several other festivals to town. So I'm rambling to say that I think what we do shows in what we do. So everything that we do, marketing and advertising, a lot of the marketing and advertising, you guys don't see it because our job is to market to overnight stays and folks to come to town. But when we provide you that request each summer, we give you those samples and tell you what the funding was used for, in addition to some of the stuff that we just do, including the articles and new stories and awards that we go in for our community. So my suggestion is I do not recommend a contract or an agreement at all because we do request it. It's up to you guys, how much you guys want to allocate to us each year. And the state statute explains that law in detail of what it needs to do and where it needs to go. We feel we follow that. We don't need that in agreement.
Thank you. From researching this, I, see there are not many, if any, chambers that have an agreement like this in place in the state.
They do not.
So I'm in agreement with you. I kind of believe we can just continue working with the state statute.
As we do.
Anybody on the board have any questions for Cynthia? Y'all have any question?
Nope.
No question? All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Cynthia. So y'all want to have any discussion on this or do you want to just move?
I'd like to say that I reviewed the draft proposal that someone put together and I had prepared a handout regarding that. I, I think that we spend taxpayer dollars. We have to have a shared responsibility to our residents for that. And I think having a memo of understanding in place is a proper way to conduct business with taxpayer dollars. So based on the draft that was put in our packet, I just put together
Okay.
some points that might be a better way of shaping it up. Do we know who drafted that?
I drafted this. Well, somebody added to it.
So we'll get a copy of that.
Okay.
All right. If you want to look over that, it's rather lengthy.
I mean, I figured we could work on this.
You can review and we can bring that back. All right, so we move on to the Safe Soliciting Act, Solicitation Act. David?
Yeah, we brought this up last board meeting because of the, under the HB 1197, there's a deadline for municipalities in the state to opt out of this Safe Solicitation Act. There's no opt-in provision, so if you don't opt out, you're in whatever the state says that you have to do. So we just needed to bring that to the board's attention so that it could be addressed before the, what's being used statewide from my understanding of all the municipalities. So Chief, I may have some comments to make, but I was agreeing that needed to be something that the.
And I have not followed through with this, Chief. You might can answer, David, but other cities in our surrounding area, do we know where they're going with this or do we have any communications with them to know?
I haven't reached out. I knew Biloxi won't want to have the ordinance to where they, it was something similar to the state statute to where people had to go and get a permit for that day to solicit in directions down that ordinance. I used to go a couple of years ago. I believe I spoke to you. I ain't come up to the podium, so I feel like I'm talking across the room.
I believe we had spoke about it, Mayor, and I spoke to David about it. The pedestrian safety ordinance we have enacted, I think last year was put in place, that was to mitigate people being out on Highway 90, no matter who it is, if it's certain groups trying to fundraise on busy interstate, any arterial highways. With this statute going in, I mean, it's gonna put them on the train on City Hall because if we have people coming in, this is gonna be a daily permit and it's gonna be for only certain permitted intersections. So like I said, my recommendation, like I said when you and I spoke and David and I spoke, was to, I think we need to opt out of it. What we have in place, I believe, covers, like I said, because it boils down to safety. I mean, that's especially with Highway 90. You know, that's a main arterial highway out there and the last thing we want is people standing in intersections, being able to, you know, it's not the solicitation part, it's more of a safety deal. You know, we don't want any injuries or fatalities out there where we start trying to promote this. So that's, that's my feelings on, like I said, after speaking with David.
Y'all have any questions for the chief while he's up?
I do. My initial concern reading this was surrounding cities, obviously.
Yeah.
If they don't opt out and we do, we're gonna have an influx of people coming here to solicit. But having spoke with you and the attorney, having a way not to actually opt in, but to have a mirror image of the state plan. If we need to, then tweak it to work for us. If that happens, then that's, I guess we're okay to opt out at that point. So that was, that was my initial concern was I've talked to some cities myself and they're somewhere on the fence.
Yeah, Dave and I have spoken regards to that, to where, you know, dynamics of everything can change. Since we opt out of this, we've always put the ordinance in place to either mirror that or somehow, you know, follow that.
Modify.
So.
Can I ask if we don't, if we opt out now, is there an opt-in? This is a one-time?
Yes, ma'am.
So what's the deadline for us to opt out?
Next meeting.
Yes, sir. It's January.
Would y'all, would y'all like to?
I'd like.
Start searching and push it to the.
Let me, let me, or you got something to say or you got a motion?
You got something, man?
After reviewing this and actually looking at it, I understand the state statute on this, but for the city and everything to follow state statute, I would like to actually make a motion to not to opt into the state statute and to have the city attorney draft up an ordinance.
Read it right so it's all in the minutes right there.
I mean, Rob, do you want to?
Go ahead. Yeah, I had it written out. Go ahead.
All right. So I'd like to make a recommendation motion that the Board of Aldermen vote to opt the House Bill 1197, the Safe Act Solicitation, under the Section 6 of the direction of the decision to be recorded in the minutes as a official opt-out of it. And within that also to have the city attorney draft a ordinance that would give the city the ability to opt in to something that would work with the city.
Wouldn't you be in ordinance?
So he's just saying if you opt out, you're out.
Yeah, we're opting out, but what I would like to, to form is.
You want to put something in place in case we have to opt in?
Correct.
That's what I was gonna ask. We have that pedestrian ordinance attached. Is that sort of the go-to right now?
That's, that's what we utilize right now. Like I said, that, that was.
So would it be modifying that?
What it sounds like to me.
We would mod, we would look.
Do a modification of the pedestrian.
Modify if needed.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Because I think we need to jump in that right now.
Okay, motion?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Alderman Hinton, second by Alderman Blackman. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's it. All right. Does anyone have anything to pull from?
Uh, E.
And that it? Somebody else?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda minus item E.
Got a motion by Alderman Blackman, second by Alderman Hinton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it. All right, item E.
I just pulled it because I've kind of like, you know, Chief Dye to give us a little background on these barrier systems and tell us, yeah.
So a couple of weeks ago, we had a rep from Meridian Barriers come around the police department to demo their product, which is that anti-vehicle pedestrian barriers. Obviously, some of the Aldermen showed up, mayor showed up, public works showed up. These barriers are put in place, you know, any event we have, like we have the ball drop coming up for New Year's Eve. So our main, you know, main arterial entry exit points, these barriers are utilized to keep, if you have somebody that's, you know, wishing to harm and or somebody, you know, medical emergency, someone that's under the influence, these barriers are designed to stop that vehicle from penetrating into the vehicle. So I believe we were all pretty impressed by their, by their product and its uses. And at that point, that's when it was mentioned that these, instead of outright purchasing initially, they could be rented. So that's when I spoke to the rep. We, you know, corresponded back and forth and the quote that you have in front of you is for, you know, a third-party company. They use to bring the barriers out for the ball drop event, set them up. After the event's over, then they pick them up and move them. So that's what you guys have in front of you.
And this covers how many intersections?
So this will cover DeSoto at Washington, Bowen at Washington, and Cotsam in government.
Six.
And it seems like a much better deal with the rental than the purchase right off the bat. And it'll take a long time to add up because we were looking at just eight barricades for $120,000 for that trailer.
They're not cheap. They're barriers.
And this one event's 20, is this 26 barricade we had?
So I looked at both.
It's like three trailers.
Yeah, it was quite a bit, too.
And then you found a way, you said, to keep anyone from coming out like the Kilwens Lot.
Yeah, so we do have a few roads that, like I said, we do have areas for bollards that can be utilized and also like Kilwens, since that's a, you know, an exit point for private property parking lot. We'll just put one of our SUVs there, an officer that's working the detail down there, so we'll, we'll have that covered.
I like it.
And the defense group has got the full insurance also. That's a good thing.
Oh, the Homeland Security?
It's very impressive.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'd like to thank y'all for, for putting this together. You know, personally, I have two very close friends losing their loved ones in New Orleans.
Yeah, that's.
And, you know, it's been something that I've known ever since that, but I appreciate you guys for giving this because we've got large crowds coming around here and anything can happen, from an accident to something intentional. So I think this is a good thing.
Yeah, I would agree. So if anybody has any more questions, if I could answer them, I'm happy to.
Now, Chief, so they'll set this all up for us?
Yes, sir.
And then they'll leave that special carrier for us?
Yes, sir. Actually, when I talked to Brent, the rep that was down here, he said what they can do when the third-party vendor gets here with the barricades, we'll grab a couple of our guys and do a quick training on them. Obviously, it wouldn't complicate to move. That way we'll have access. If we have to move, move them for any reason, we'll be able to.
All right, great. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing them at the ball drop.
Me too, me too.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right, we need a motion for item E.
All right, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the rental agreement with Meridian Rapid Defense Group for New Year's Eve barriers in the amount of $4,620.
Got a motion by Alderman Fifer?
Second.
And second by Alderman Blackman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Gee, that's it. All right, Department Reports, docket of claims. Anyone have anything to pull from the docket of claim? If not, is there a motion to approve the docket?
So moved.
I'm making a motion to approve the docket of claims. All expenditures are appropriate and authorized by law and spread in summary on the minutes.
Okay, got a motion by Alderman Blackman, second by Alderman Hinton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the monthly budget report. Anyone have any questions on the monthly budget report? If not, do we have a motion to accept the monthly budget report?
Make a motion to accept the monthly budget report.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Blackman, second by Alderman Wade. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it. All right, now we're on to General Public Comment. The public is invited to address the board for about five minutes each for a maximum period of 30 minutes. Do we have anybody? Mr. James?
Good evening. James Lewis, War 5. I want to thank you all for going back in Holcomb and Government and going back in and making that not a triangle like this, but a curve as far as that curve is concerned. But they need to come back just like down here on Porter, the general version. Line needs to drop back where the vehicle stops at because you still have a problem trying to make that turn off of Government on Holcomb going north. And it's the same thing if you're trying to go back in and you're going west, but you're gonna turn off of Government and going north onto Holcomb because it's very hard. I just did it again today.
You talking about the curb, where we put the rollover curbs?
Cut back like we're Batallas.
Yeah, we cut that curb back.
You cut it. It was, it was square like this.
Yeah, and we did a rollover.
Roll it back in and roll it. But it's, there's still a problem there when you're trying to go back in and make the turn.
And move the stop bars back so the opposing traffic isn't in your way of turning.
That when, when we do a restriping on that, that would have to be addressed.
Right, because it's just, it's happened to me four times again today when I'm trying to make the turn to go there. I gotta pull out and I'm in the southbound lane to make the turn because if not, my back wheel on the right.
Still his territory.
Pick that curb and come across.
So you're saying the northbound on Holcomb needs to be pulled back a little bit so that pedestrian, traffic is back a little further?
Just like we have down here on, on Porter and, uh, general version.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll show me. I know on Holcomb where you're talking about. I know it's much better than it was, but.
Yeah, it is.
Anybody else like to address the board or not?
Little more, War 2. I saw some activity taking place on my street on Holcomb down by Upper Weeks Bayou. We talked about this before. I know there's plans to do some erosion control on the upper portions of that. Looks like recracks going in. There are lots of natural solutions that is well or better than concrete recrack. They look better, they're more kind to the surroundings. It allows the water to be absorbed into the surroundings and not pushed just further downstream. So I hate to see that solution going in place, but you consult an engineer, you're gonna get an engineering solution. It looks like that's what the city started to do. Last week, I was walking on Holcomb. People think about that drainage area being a ditch. I saw a beautiful river otter swimming up, up that ditch. We've seen alligators. It's actually a vibrant tidal basin. It changes and flows with the tides. And I just hate to see that become a, you know, a concrete structure. Just like I know the cities, we've talked about the living tidings and things. I think that's true of our bayous and waterways as well. So I'm just hearing my grades. I don't really have a great solution. It looks like some of mine's already been spent. But I hope that the city will maybe consult, think about natural solutions in addition to, you know, more traditional engineering solutions in the future. So thanks.
Now, they're not pulling concrete, right? It's your, the rock.
Yeah, the rocks, the rocks like they have over on, with parallel to.
Simon.
Yeah.
Anybody else like to address the board?
No.
All right, we will move on to Alderman's forum and we're gonna change a little bit. Alderman Hinton, would you like to go first tonight?
Yes, I would.
I would like to address everybody in the whole board. Sitting on this board is something that is an honor to represent Ocean Springs residents. When we are called to do our duty, it is something that we hold to our heart. There was a special call that was called last week on Monday. None of the Aldermen called me and asked me if I could be available for that meeting. It was a meeting that was broadcast on the social media and the news network. That following day, I responded on Monday, but I was not able to attend to that because I had prior obligations. A special call is designed for emergencies and personnel issues. This board as a whole, as we agree to disagree, we are to work together for our community and to respect one another. This board is something that we need to look at ourselves and know why we are sitting here. We all love Ocean Springs, but we need to put our values before us and our hatred to the side. We have addressed our attorney issue several times and voted on it several times. The attorney had brought something to our attention at our last meeting on the PFAS litigation. There was three proposals that were brought before us. One proposal that was brought before us had already been given to the city prior several months to being brought to us. Last administration, put it at that way. In that proposal, he is getting brought over saying that he is profiting from a proposal he had nothing to do about. I fact-checked all this, made damn sure before I spoke about it, this is not something that is a fault of this attorney. Yes, he has made a clerical error, but we have, as a board, time to review and make sure that it is written right in the minutes. I will stand behind David Harris, but as this board, I ask all of us to stand back and communicate. This is our duty to Ocean Springs and its residents. And I sit here tonight. Please communicate and work together. We might disagree, but we must work together. Thank you.
Only thing I have is we have Fort Biastate's annual Christmas with Santa. It'll be this Saturday, starting at 10:00 a.m. The fire trucks will be with Santa at that Bristol in Nottingham and will leave at 10 o'clock. And then we'll also have golf carts with dress and decor. If you want to join us, dress up your golf cart, bring some candy, different throws for the children. So the golf cart will follow the fire truck. And then they'll all meet up at the John Gill Park and then Santa will take pictures and they'll accept the wish list from the children. So if you want to participate, be at Bristol in Nottingham on your golf cart. 9:45, we leave at 10. That's all I have.
That's really become a pretty big event for Fort Biastate, isn't it?
It's, yeah, it's one of the biggest car participant areas.
Everybody that goes has a lot.
I don't know who's gonna be Santa.
Sam.
Sam?
Maybe Bobby.
Maybe Ron Chambers.
There you go.
At the rate I'm going, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Steve. All right, Mr. Stennis?
I just got a couple of things. One, I just wanted to see what the timeline was on this bad word of Russell Avenue.
I have kind of extended a little bit and I asked if we could get a quote on replacing that water line all the way to Government Street because every time they put a patch, it's breaking 10, 15 feet away from the patch. So right now they have a temporary patch from where they fixed it last time. So he's getting a quote.
We got a contractor meeting me there at 8:30 tomorrow morning. We're gonna measure everything off to get a quote to go all the way to Government.
Do we have any idea of any kind of time? I mean, I've got somebody pounding me every week.
I mean, as soon as we get that quote, we'll make a move one way or another. I mean.
And Sarah is waiting as soon as it's finished to get more paving in there to pave.
Yeah, because it's been a long time, a long haul.
A long, long time.
Too long. The second thing I would like to address is that there were some misconceptions about the special call meeting last week. One of them is that, that we were told there was no forum, no, there wasn't gonna be a quorum. And that just wasn't true. You can look at all my email threads with Christine and we were told that she didn't know that there'd be a quorum at 9:30, but as the day went on, we were continued updated that the, the streaming is, is hooked up, the, the notice has been posted. And that told me that we were on go for that. And I didn't know that and I prepared for no quorum, quorum, whatever happened in here. I had about four different preparations for it. I had about four different preparations for it. And if you think that that was just something that we did to make everybody look bad, it's not true. Because I have been speaking about some of the unethical things that are done. And I have my own personal attorneys that look at things because there are some issues. And the fact that we were taken in a closed executive session and given three different alternatives with one, the attorney gaining benefit financially from it, that was a big red flag. And I promised my constituents that I would be transparent, I would be honest, I would have integrity. And that's what I plan to do. It's not always pretty, it's not always fun, but I'm going to tell you that I will be honest. I'm not going to play any games. And if it takes spouting out what needs to be spouted out, nothing in that executive meeting was told out of line because you cannot hide something like that. Whether it was planned before, whether it was brought to the board, we, at the time, we had no clue about that. But even if it does, an attorney cannot benefit from a contract that the city has to act on. The city attorney cannot do that. That would be like Mr. Hinton getting a contract for all the painting of City Hall or Mr. Wade getting all the countertops for City Hall. I mean, you can't do that. It is not acceptable. And I don't want to sit around and be a spectator to things like that because I think we are going to be in the same boat as we were the last four years if we don't get a hold of that and start being open, transparent, honest about every action we take. And that's all I've got to say about that.
Mr. Wade?
Alan, I got two things. There's a couple sidewalks right there past the pump station that needs to be worked on on Holcomb. And then the school, coming into the school where they messed it up, needs to be done, redone. Hopefully, we could do that at Christmas when the school was closed. The other thing I'm going to comment on, on your thing about honesty and transparent Karen, is I received something at 8 o'clock Sunday night.
Yeah.
It wasn't from an Alderman. It wasn't an Alderman.
Yeah.
It was the news.
Yeah. We had to send it to them the night before to get them to be able to come for the next day. That's the way that works.
The thing is, we're on a board. A phone call goes a long way, and there is no communication between two of y'all and the rest of the board.
That's right.
That's all I have to say.
Yeah, that's right.
I think I already talked to Chief Di about an issue with speeders on Government Street monitor. But, yeah, I cannot agree that a city attorney can pitch proposals in which one of them, he is going to sign on his co-counsel to receive financial gain. He should have recused himself. We should have another attorney that is looking at these PFAS proposals because there's a conflict here. And I stand by pretty much anything Karen Stennis just said.
Okay, Mr. Blackman?
First off, Mayor, I sent Sarah a file, electronic file of a sewer study, citywide. I believe it was citywide, was it? Did you look at it yet?
The map showed the city.
Yeah. It's back from 1718, when we had a proposed, like, very low percentage loan to do all this work that the board at that time declined to opt into. But I did find that and sent it out. It shows the location of a lot of the problem sewer and water areas. I'd like to continue building upon that, however you guys see fit to move forward with it. We definitely need that done. I also have in my vehicle, and I'll give her afterwards, a drainage, citywide drainage study from several years ago that I was able to get my hands on. And so we need to, we need to work as a whole and add the annexed areas in to what we've got a building block for already and move forward. We're getting this whole citywide studies done, all three, water, sewer, and drainage. And like I said, and build it out to the annexed areas at six and five. So I'll be with you and Sarah on that. Other thing, I have one motion. I believe there was an oversight. Police Department did not get this put on the agenda. Need to make a motion to authorize employee number 2808 for out-of-state travel to attend the FBI crisis negotiation course in Stapleton, Alabama on December 8th through the 12th, 2025. Tuition is no cost to the student.
Got a motion by Alderman Blackman, second by Alderman Wayne, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that it. Hi, Julie?
Just as an update, I've been gathering information in regards to the area that I proposed previously to revisit at a future meeting. And second, I'm pleased that it was approved for the lighting in Trentwood to enhance security and visibility for the residents there. I'm excited that they'll benefit from that, so that's all.
One more.
I do have one note here to remind everybody. The Christmas tree lighting was scheduled for Thursday night, but I believe it is being rescheduled due to the rain. And it's, I think we're looking at Tuesday, the 9th. So the Christmas tree lighting will be moved to the 9th, but the Christmas parade is still on the 7th. So anybody that can get out and participate, come see us. And Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus will be showing up, and we'll all be celebrating the light.
As well as the Holiday Open House on Friday and Saturday, Saturday Light Festival on Saturday, snow day on Saturday.
And a few other things. Thank you very much. That's right. Well, I appreciate that, Cindy. So do we have an executive session? We need to discuss, is there a motion to go into closing? So moved. Got a motion by Alderman Hinton, second by Alderman Wayne, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That's it.
Excuse me, let me have your attention. Excuse me, let me have your attention. Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation PFAS, an update on the Fisher litigation and contract negotiation. It was a motion made by Alderman Faper, seconded by Alderman Hinton, and unanimously passed.